The owl is here. How do we know it's like?
Like I said, I was just trying to understand.
Turn around. Is it just twirl when you touch that? It does have a turtleneck on. The eyes are on the side.
Are they two people ranked number one?
What's the other one?
Well, so let us at the end, I'm going to have a word with them.
No, I don't.
Here, right.
I'm not trying to get out of that. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, because I don't want to go. Why do you use this person a one? You know, what can be kind of that, give the person a higher.
So do you want to know?
Right.
No, no.
No, I'm just asking. If you do, okay. I guess maybe I'm not. If you want to see everyone sheet, I guess.
Maybe.
No, because I mean, I'm fine with saying it's positive. But at that point, it's like, okay, then here's the, I don't want to rely on someone.
Well, Lorraine will have all of these. She'll be telling her that all of them. So if somebody, I mean, if if Erin ranked someone number one. And eight people said she was number one. We could say, so, you know, would anyone like to explain why this candidate was ranked number one?
We get a lot of calls in Tennessee, too.
So.
Can I suggest that you watch our meeting when we did the DEI committee interviews? Because I think that will help you understand what helped us in that.
Yeah.
When we ranked it and then we openly discussed the ranks. So there wasn't anything that wasn't, you know, discussed in the open forum. And everybody will get the opportunity to deliberate, too. It's just an easy way to go, hey, if we all ranked somebody eight, why are we going to spend 20 minutes figuring out where that person is, right?
No, I completely agree. I'm like, I'm just saying, like, well, we'll get back from this and how we'll drive the conversation. Because I've seen it done in different ways, on the boards, and I just want to make sure that we're.
That's never for us, so.
No, no, I.
We got a summary sheet, yeah?
No, we just.
Well, yes, somebody kept a tab, just like Lorraine was is going to do.
Right. And then we just read it out loud and opened it up pretty special.
About what I was looking for, I just, you know, I hadn't seen your meeting. And I found out about this earlier today, so I'm just trying to make sure we, you know, it's something the same way we come in, it's like, oh, this is, you know, the two years we try to work it out and get the points on, you know, like, that's all I'm trying to get to.
So what?
Oh, my notes.
And some people, they lean up and down, too, which is interesting.
Yeah, but that's what we did when we hired the superintendent past week. Obviously, that was more.
The only difference is that going to school, suddenly hire whatever position that was involved in superintendent, assistant superintendent, disventure, the committee determines what the criteria that we're looking for in that candidate. So the only difference here, from my perspective, is that as a committee, we don't know what we're looking for. Everyone has their ideas. It's just different, it doesn't mean it's right or wrong, it's just different. So when you're grading someone, you're grading someone based on what you think is important opposed to what the committee has decided is important.
Well, because this is a public representative, it's not a hired employee. So we're not creating that criteria, that's not up to us. This is a, we don't create the criteria when we run for the board or when you run for the school committee, right? That criteria is already created at the charge. Right?
Yeah, no, it's the same.
I mean, we're elected officials. And in this case, we're appointing somebody temporarily to an elected position, so it's not up to us to create criteria. We have things we're looking for, I'm sure everybody does.
Maybe, I think we all have criteria, but it's not a mutual criteria.
Right, and I think it should be.
That's good. It's just a, it's just a data point, you know, we'll get something out of here that gets, A, it's a place you take notes and remember people, and B, let's see if there's any sort of consensus. And then we talk about it, it's not, it's not the numbers game wins.
Right.
It's just a data point.
It's definitely been set up for it. Wow. A little better.
Do you guys leave gold ones there?
Is that a six?
No.
It's like each company?
I'm not doing this.
No, whole bunch.
I know, there's a whole. We're not doing it.
I'll just check this out.
Three meetings in a row.
So I'm going to call a leave meeting of the select board to order. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as we're even?
So.
Also moved by Mr. Benai, all in favor?
Hi.
Board of members? Motion carries.
I'm going to call the district school committee meeting to order. Six thirty one.
So you don't take them up?
Yeah.
We have different committee rules in my legislation here. So this is the first of three joint meetings of the select board and the school committee to fill a vacancy on the school committee created by a met resignation. We are committed to an open, fair, and respectful process and have taken the following steps to make sure this will happen. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-one, Section eleven, the school committee notified the select board in writing of a vacancy on the committee due to a resignation. A process to fill that vacancy was then determined. On August fifth, we notified the community of the opening on the school committee through the town and school websites, local newspaper, and announcements at regularly scheduled town committee meetings. We asked interested citizens to submit a resume and a letter of interest to the town select board office. Eight people responded, and we thank them very much for coming forward. We then sent the applicants three questions to answer in writing by September sixth. All complied. We will get all documents available on the town and school websites on Friday, September tenth. We will interview four people tonight and four people tomorrow night at the same time and place. The interview schedule is in alphabetical order. We will be going to fill the vacancy in an open meeting on September fifteenth. Our hearings will be broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available the next day on Citroen Community TV YouTube. Our format for tonight and tomorrow night will be as follows. I will ask each candidate to introduce themselves, explain why they want to serve on the school committee, and if appointed, will they run for a full term in the spring. This introductory statement should be three minutes or less, and we're really going to try to keep people to three minutes or less. I will then ask each committee member to ask a question, alternating between the select board and the school committee. Applicants should keep their answers to three minutes or less. Any remaining time will be used for follow-up questions if there are any. No interview will take more than thirty minutes. Committee members will be given a ranking sheet to be completed and returned to Lorraine Devon in the select board office by end of business day on September thirteenth. She will compile results into one summary document, which will be distributed to committee members at the September fifteenth meeting. A discussion and vote will follow. The applicant appointed will serve the balance of the term until the upcoming town election in the spring. Does the committee have any questions about the process or? No? All right, so I will first call Dr. Carrie Borowski, Portowski, I'm sorry.
Caskey plus.
Or Caskey?
Yep, Or Caskey.
It's okay.
I'll get it. Sorry, I asked the students who.
They called Dr. B?
Yes, they do, actually, that is totally fine.
Thank you. So would you like to tell us about yourself and why you want to serve and if you plan on running in the spring if you were appointed?
Sure, and I feel like this is karma coming back to me because I just finished August of oral comps with all of my students. And so I'm now looking down the barrel at the same thing, so. So as I was introduced, my name is Karen Caskey. I am a professor at Johns Hopkins University. I've had the good fortune of being able to teach remotely with doctoral students in ED program, and they come from us all over the world, which is, which is wonderful. I have three kids, and I believe they had their first day of school today, so they were happily singing down to the, to the bus stop this morning. I have a fourth grader and twin first graders. In terms of motivation, it was, it was timely that we were sent the questions from the committees because Doctor, excuse me, Superintendent Burke had sent out a welcome to the families about a week ago, and he reminded us that the focus for this year was going to be on three things: a culture of collaboration, a cultural personalization, and a culture of excellence. And I thought, what a nice way for me to sort of think about my motivation. So when I think about collaboration, I would share that while I've been in Citroen for only, my family and I have only been in Citroen, this will be our fifth year, I feel like I have, from day one, I jumped into the PTO. Our first child was entering kindergarten, and I thought, you know what? I need to get involved, I need to learn about the schools, I want to meet the the parents and the teachers, and so I did. And from there, I became, eventually became the co-president of the PTO. I've served on the principal's advisory committee and have continued to participate in other things around town, including the DEI search committee as well as the DEI committee when we were working on that statement. And so in terms of collaboration, I'm really motivated to expand what I've been doing and participate in a different, different way through the school committee. In terms of personalization, the work that we've done around DEI in this community is really important, and I think it is highly related to personalized learning and personalization of education. And I can tell you as an openly gay woman, white woman, that I spent a lot of my time in education not being seen and not being, recognizing myself in the books that I read and the things that we did. And so I am committed to that work of personalization. Additionally, I see personalization when it comes to thinking about student success. So we know, I know from firsthand working with graduate students and doctoral students what college ready looks like. I know that those students need to be curious, they need to have the knowledge, they need to have critical thinking. But what I also know and how it's related to personalization, that there are lots of students out there who aren't interested in college. And so we also need to be thinking about personalization from a technical standpoint. And I spent several years at a community college working with students on certifications, on associate's degrees, and technical training. And so I see working with the school committee in our schools as an opportunity to think about that. Lastly, and I saved it for last, this, this culture of excellence, because I think that collaboration, personalization are all related to excellence, right? And so for me, with my knowledge of learning theory, research methods, having taught teachers, I work with superintendents, I work with school leaders, I am strongly committed to, you know, promoting excellence in our schools. I know as a school committee member that the code of ethics says that our first obligation is to our students and those future students. So I want to promote that excellence. I also believe that the idea of promoting excellence is really a holistic approach and that it's approaching the child from its whole, whole self, their whole selves. And so being able to think about what it means to create inclusive spaces where everybody is seen and also able to learn. And so, you know, collaborative, collaboration, personalization, and excellence really are what are motivating me to be a part of this, this team.
Very good, you're under three minutes.
All right.
Very good. Are you planning on running for a term if you were appointed a full term?
So, I mean, I think that's a hard question to answer. I, it's on the table, I'm seriously considering it, so I hope that's a reasonable enough answer.
If it's the truth.
It's the truth, it's the truth.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Holden?
Thank you for coming. I think it's great that, you know, we said some elections will be done, one person running in order to eight people.
Yeah.
I want to do this ten months. I pity you, but welcome.
That's not a very good.
I think the point you made about research analytics is important, it goes into my question. So, you know, currently, one of the major issues facing local state governments today is whether or not to mandate masks. And Massachusetts said, okay, we're going to maybe mask and lock it over first. I'm not going to make, make a stand on masks, I promise.
Thank you.
But more, my question is more about, you know, when, when such a large and potential divisive issue does come to the school committee, what is your thought process when the issue actually comes up and arises when the school committee actually votes and makes it?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I mean, thank you for not making me take a stand on that head issue, I appreciate it. In terms of what do we do when a divisive issue faces us? Look, I'm an educator, and while I'm not going to make decisions about masks, as a leader of an online doctoral program and a teacher of lots of diverse students, I see discourse and debate all the time. And so I think I call on my dispositions around, you know, listening. I, I listen, I think it's really important, and I know from reading some of the policy manual on the school committee that, that one of the primary responsibilities is to represent and listen to the voices of everybody in the town. And so I would spend a great deal of time trying to listen and really understand the experiences of different people. I would also want to consult with the appropriate sources, evidence, right? You know, I know in the case of masks, you had a, a medical committee that you were able to look to. So I think figuring out the relevant evidence and then weighing that evidence. I think what's also important, and I'm, I'm reminded of this in my own profession, Mike, is what's the role of the school committee in this issue? What, what can and can't we do, right? So remembering what that responsibility is and figuring that out. And, yeah, and I just think consulting with individual members of the team, consulting with the experts and the evidence that we have, and again, listening, and one thing that maybe would be annoying about me, but I think is also a strength in me, is I ask lots of questions. I, I have lots of degrees and have lots of training, and I feel like I have more questions than answers most of the time. Don't tell my kids I said that. So I would continue to ask questions until we felt like we had really, sort of in the research link that we talk about saturation, right, where you reach a point of saturation where you feel like you, you've gotten to the different experience of individuals, and then hopefully we'd be able to come to some decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, now to Tony.
Oh, sure.
We're going to alternate.
Yeah, tennis match here.
I guess I will ask, I mean, there's been two, recently, two kind of big topic issues in the school. One has to do with, you know, remote classes and masks, and one of them has had to do with the diversity stuff, which you've been involved as well.
Yeah.
And I guess I will be specific. What, what are your thoughts on those two things? And what, you know, I mean, it's dynamic, it's changing, you know, information is changing all the time, but, but what are your thoughts on those? That's what people want to know, and.
Yeah, sure.
So if you want to start with kind of education through this pandemic situation we're going through, and, and kids wearing masks and having remote learning, and then if you can transition to the others, well.
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Tony, for the question. So I'll be really honest, I, one thing you'll learn about me really quickly is I'm super authentic and I am who I am, and I'm going to be really honest and bring that to the table. And so what I'll share with you is that my wife and I made the really hard decision last fall to keep our kids home remote for the first part of the school year. We just felt that, we just didn't feel like it was safe for, you know, the, the hybrid sort of approach to schools. And so I tell you that just to give you sort of a lens that we were coming from. In terms of what's going on now, you know, I definitely fall in the camp of, I was for masks. I was honestly frustrated with our governor that they were leaving it on the backs of our superintendents and districts to make that decision because I think that's a pretty, that's a lot to ask of individual districts. And so I was really pleased that the governor and that they offered some guidance. I think that in my heart and in my research brain, I follow the science. And to me, the science is still saying that it makes sense to wear masks, that it's safe, that I don't want to infect anybody else, and I am vaccinated. My kids are not, they're not able to, they are under the age that they're committed to. The other thing I'll tell you, Tony, is I think one of the main reasons I was pro-mask in addition to health is I know how hard remote learning was, and I'm a teacher. I had, I had a third grader and two kindergartners working online, right? And so the other thought I had, Tony, was if they wear masks, there's a better chance that they're not going to have to go to remote learning. And I really think my kids wanted to be in school. And I understand the frustration that we can't see their faces and, you know, they were frustrated. But honestly, my kids were just so happy to be back in school, they couldn't care less that they had a mask on. They wanted to be in person with their friends. And so I'm hopeful that maybe by October, this will be better. But I'm definitely, I mean, I guess if I'm going to be really honest, I am pro-mask. I'm, yeah.
And there's no right or wrong yet, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I agree with you, so.
Yeah, and I, yeah. In terms of the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I know that's been, you know, a contentious topic, and I think it's been particularly contentious around sort of this notion of critical race theory, right? And sort of what that is and isn't. I mean, I think generally speaking, again, I'll be honest with you, my research interest and my, like, my scholarly writings, and I have a book coming out actually in October, is all about creating community connections and belonging. Again, going back to this idea that even doctoral students, I'm not talking about kindergartners, I'm talking about thirty-five-year-olds, forty-five-year-olds who are professionals, established careers, they want to be seen in the classroom. And I think if we think about diversity, equity, and inclusion in that way, and if we look at the missions and values of what Citroen schools are to promote trust and respect and civility, that that work is important. The other thing I will say, and I'll try not to be so foxy about it, is that the literature does tell us that when you promote belonging in classrooms, it increases deep learning, it increases retention, it increases academic outcomes. So the part of this conversation that frustrates me, Tony, is that the debate often becomes either or. And what I'm trying to get people to say is, yes, and, it's both, sorry.
That's all right.
See, I got a little so foxy, so I went, I went too long, thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's an important topic, I appreciate that.
Go that one. Jess?
Hi Karen, glad to see you.
I know, in person, it's great.
I'd like to address your commitment to Stride.
Yeah, sure.
So if you are chosen.
Yeah.
Are you prepared to give up your position there? Is that?
I already, I've already backed off, yeah, I've already, so that is, you know, I had talked to, actually, I had talked to Mike Long about it because I wanted to understand sort of the lines. And I know from Nicole, you had come to Hatherley, you were serving on the, the principal advisory committee. So I know that there is some connection to these groups, but I would be giving up my role in the principal's advisory council at Hatherley, and I would also step back at Stride. Now, if, if able, I need to, I'm still digging into the policy manual and have lots to learn, but if I'm able, I would still be interested in, you know, attending a meeting, especially when they have great speakers and things of that nature because I just think they're doing good work. But in terms of any sort of steering committee or leadership role, I've already told those folks I would have to be stepping back, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Laura? Thank you. Hi Hunter Borowski?
Or Caskey, yeah, you can call me Karen.
First of all, thank you for coming forward, and your experience, you know, as an educator is just stupendous. So no doubt that you have that skill set there.
Thank you.
I'm curious if you could share with us what type of leadership skills can you draw from your professional experience and bring to the table to assist the superintendent in meeting his goals for excellence?
Yeah, that's such a good question, so, again, so this is funny because I actually teach a leadership theory course at Hopkins. So I think I could draw sort of on, you know, the, what the literature says about what makes a good leader in terms of, and I've mentioned some of them in my opening statement with respect to really being a good listener and, you know, making sure that everyone is, is feeling valued and has contributions. And so I think, you know, you know, in talking to the superintendent, the first thing I would do, honestly, and this is really a theme for me, is I really want to learn what he's already doing. I never want to go into a situation ever making assumptions because I don't know. And from what I've seen so far, I feel like he's doing a pretty good job. So I would love to chat with him to hear what's working, you know, what has worked in other situations, and, you know, how could I help? And then sort of, you know, talk through different strategies that might, you know, move him forward, whether it's listening, whether it's, you know, again, being a learner in situations. Should he, you know, oftentimes, a leader will step in and feel like they have to own the situation, and maybe it's, oh, maybe you step back and do a little bit more delegating. I know as a leader myself, I sometimes have trouble sort of relinquishing control. So I feel like my, the analytical side of me, we want to go in and listen and do some, you know, diagnosing and sort of hear what he has to say and then co-construct some strategies together and move forward.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, no worries, thank you. Nicole?
Hi Karen.
Hey Nicole.
How are you?
Good.
So Tony mentioned the current hot topics being masking and I don't think it's COVID, and then of course DEI. But, you know, as we know, things kind of swing back and forth to what the current hot topic is. So I always try to, maybe it was this doom and gloom, I may have had to what the next hot.
Uh-oh, yeah.
So given that, and sometimes it is budgeting, so, for us. So I just, I'd like to get some insight from you as to what your understanding is of the school committee's budget process and what do you see as upcoming priorities as we think and forecast ahead?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I'll be honest with you, I recently took on the interim director of the program I mentioned earlier, and budgeting is something that I still have a lot to learn. I'm really good at numbers, quantitative numbers, and doing analysis in various packages, but the financial side is something I'm still learning. My understanding of the role of the school committee is obviously to be a good steward of the financial resources of the town and to, you know, be checking in and be, being, holding the superintendent and the leaders accountable for what they're saying they're going to do, and to make sure that the way in which they sort of prioritize their budget matches the mission and priorities that are related to student outcomes. So I understand that to be part of the process. In terms of priorities, I mean, gosh, Nicole, again, I, you know, I lean on my colleagues if I became part of the committee to hear more of that. But given what Assistant Superintendent Driscoll talked about in the last meeting, it sounds like some expenses around curriculum could be potentially. And I was, again, as a learner, I was really surprised at some of the price tags that she was talking about. So I imagine, given the interest in curriculum by the, the town, that there could be some debates and conversations around how to spend that money within the curriculum lines. But I'm sure there will be other things that come up as well.
Andrew?
Doctor?
Yeah, Andrew, you skipped the last name, that was a good strategy. Very smart.
So I was, I was intrigued by some of the things you talked about in the answers that you posted. One of them was about, and, you know, being part of a public forum, the confidentiality aspect when folks come up.
Yeah.
You, you talked a little bit about the balance, but if you kind of extend a bit, you know, if a group or someone comes to you, how do you balance that, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so good, close read of my, my answer there. So, yeah, so this was in the question around if a group or an individual comes to you with an issue, sort of what are the steps that you'll take? And, and one of the things as I was thinking about my response was, I was really grappling with that notion of confidentiality because I know just from reading the manual and from just observing the committee that, and with students, right, we have FERPA issues and things of that nature that we, that we have sensitive topics. And so my read of things, Andrew, and my understanding of sort of how we would manage that is, you know, if, if a parent, for example, came to me about an issue and they were talking about their students, clearly, that part of the story, you know, would be confidential. But the issue, whatever the theme of the issue, I feel like that is where I would need to bring transparency, right? So if it's around, we were talking earlier, Tony, about critical race theory and DEI. So if someone came to me and said, I don't want my, this child learning critical race theory, well, the, the theme of critical race theory would be what I would want to bring to the public and to the school committee to have a conversation. But who, who was affected would be less important. So that, I think that's how I would try to balance it. But of course, again, I would look to my school committee colleagues for more guidance on, you know, the, the boundaries of confidentiality.
Thank you. Peter Vegas?
Okay.
Hey, Peter.
Final last one, I have two, two-part question, both very unrelated questions, but one's just a quick one, and the second one is a question. Two-part question.
Was one an A or B?
First, yeah, first, real quick.
I'll track them on.
It's a two-part question, I like Tony, I think Tony's like two parts. So the first one is, I know that with the vacancy is the school committee role, but I just wanted to, I guess, question, are you aware that there are other liaison and subcommittee positions that are also part of this?
Yeah, I did, I saw, yeah, that people get assigned to different parts, yeah.
And I'm not sure exactly, we have to be go to the committee in terms of, but most likely you'd just be reassigned. Just want to make sure that, that all the folks are aware of that because that often can, oftentimes takes up more commitment than being on the school committee.
Yep.
The second one, you've kind of answered this to some degree, but our district has been realistically through three superintendents over. But our district has been relatively through three superintendents over the last five years. You can count it that way, four years. So to me, the question is, how do you balance managing issues that are raised by parents, stakeholders, and special interest groups while supporting the superintendent?
So I think that I would ultimately be guided by the mission, vision, as well as the responsibilities of the school committee via the policy manual, right? So I would always be going back to our obligation is to the students and future students of the town. And so to the extent that what the superintendent is doing, we feel like as a group is aligning with those. And as again, in terms of finances, going back to Nicole's question, he is or she, whomever it is at that time, is meeting the obligations and is, you know, being a good steward. I feel like that is how I would manage that piece. And then I would be left to think about the issues around, you know, that come up so often with the parents and, and other issues that emerge with teachers and staff. So I think, I think that the, and I wrote that when I was writing my statements, I kept writing those out, that the mission, vision, and sort of the, the four roles of the school committee would be my compass every time. So that if, if something with the superintendent in one of those sort of, those areas started to go awry, I would know that I would need to draw my attention back to help, you know, I don't know, as managing, as much as sort of account, holding to him to a cap, right? And asking questions and sort of redirecting that and then returning to the issues, if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, very good. So it is 6:55, we have another 10 minutes for follow-up questions. I don't know if you want me to go around the room or if people just want to raise their hands? If you do have a follow-up question?
Except for follow-up, that exactly, and for Dr. So in your opinion, doctor, what is, what do you see as the ideal relationship between a school committee and superintendent?
Ideal relationship? So I'm a big believer, believer in you can't communicate too much. So I think having very strong lines of communication is important. I think promoting an environment of transparency, right? That we know what he, right now is a he, so I'm saying he, he is engaged in. I think, you know, creating sort of group norms or expectations around, you know, questions are good, you know, inviting questions and curiosities and sort of create, setting the stage that this isn't about us as a committee jumping on you or a haphazard moment. This is really us exploring and trying to understand the process. And to me, it's, I use the term a lot in my work because I really believe it. It really is co-constructing or co-designing, like we're in this as a partnership. And so we look to him for, for things and resources, and he also looks to us for guidance. So it really is, to me, a sort of mutual, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Well, I'll try to alternate this way. Even though, okay, sorry, Andrew.
Yeah, I mean, as a dad of the three boys, putting aside what the school committee needs, considering what our kids need.
Yes, so I have three kids too. So I often ask myself that, that question. I think they need a safe place to go. I think they need to be seen. I think that they need to be heard and that the things that they read and learn need to reflect the experiences that they have. They need to be given a wonderful learning environment that's, that's full of multiple, a multitude of affordances so that the, the different ways in which students learn is, you know, taken care of. And I, yeah, I just, they need to have fun, they need to be safe, and they need to be challenged, and they need to be heard because, gosh, most of the time, Andrew, my kids are way smarter than me. And so I need to, I think they need to get that space to explore and learn, so.
Nicole?
I did, it goes right down the line here. So my follow-up is more, you talked about relationship with superintendent, Andrew, kid, the kids. And so I was curious about staff, I mean, even as parents, we've got interactions with our own kids' teachers and what you, you know, the outline between all the hats we wear.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, look, that's, I mean, that's, that's always tricky, right? And again, I said earlier that I am who I am and I'm super authentic. And I learned a long time ago that rather than sitting in a situation feeling really uncomfortable and wondering what the person across the table is thinking, I just say, I say, okay, hold on for a second. I'm here as so-and-so's parent. This is not me as a school committee member tonight, right? So I just sort of call it out and feel like I can move forward. And I do think while I've obviously never been on the school committee, having served on the PTO and having been a part of STRIDE, I mean, I've represented different committees. And so I'm very comfortable sort of talking with individuals about who I am and not in those different situations, so.
Thanks. Yes. Laura?
To put on that, not your role as a school committee member and that sort of challenging dichotomy that you get into, but what do you think the staff needs? How will you represent them on board?
Staff needs more time. I think, so I had the pleasure, great pleasure, I was really lucky. Superintendent Burke had reached out to me because he knew I taught online. I had the wonderful pleasure of doing online professional learning with them before we went back to school and did remote learning. And I, I mean, I think the staff are, you know, when Andrew asked me about the students, the staff are human beings, right? And we should be caring for our staff in the same way that we care for our students. We should be, you know, listening to them, seeing them, paying attention to what they need and remembering that everything they do isn't just a means to an end for our student outcomes, that they really are human. And, I mean, I don't know, you know, Mrs. Henry is my, my kid's first grade teacher. And I want to know what Mrs. Henry is interested in, what does she want to do beyond this? How does she want to grow in that position? Because again, the literature tells us that when teachers and staff feel seen, they're more satisfied, they're more productive, retention is longer, they stay in positions longer. And it's just good for our students, right, when, when our, when our teachers are happy. So I would approach sort of the notions of how we treat our students, how we treat our parents, the same way we should be treating our staff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have just a quick question. So you're clearly very busy, right? You've got kids, you've got a job, you've got, I don't even know how you found time to write this. I mean, this was very, very detailed. So you, you.
What did you expect from an academic, from Tony?
Well, it's time, it takes time.
Yeah, it does.
And you didn't run for school committee when, last year, when it came up.
Yep.
Was there an aha moment? Was there something that said, hey, now it's my, this is, this is causing me to want to get involved? When you really, you're doing a lot of stuff, right? You didn't have to get involved.
Yeah.
You could have been very strong in the other, other areas you're working in, so.
Yeah. It's a fair question. So I will say, I didn't run for the last opening. I started to collect signatures and then the pandemic started. And I just wasn't sure, like, would, being a newer sort of unknown in the town, I wasn't sure I'd be able to collect the, so just sort of say that. The other thing I'll say, Tony, is I do think as hard and as difficult the pandemic has been for all of us in so many different ways, one of the things that's come out of the pandemic is having access to the school committee via Zoom has been this amazing gift. That parents like myself and my wife, who do have kids and who do work, literally, and this sounds so geeky, but dinnertime on Mondays when a school committee meeting was happening, my kids know the Zoom is coming on and they sit and we all watch. And we started doing that as family. And what that permitted me to do was to get involved in, in the town in a different and important way. And with the conversations that were had and the public comments and the issues that we've already talked about, and with my experience and background, I think I do feel very drawn to come on to the committee now. That I, as busy as I am, I don't, I don't see that there's a better time. I said to my wife, I said, if I don't do this now, it's foolish. I need to try to do this now because I think that what I offer the school committee aligns so well with what we know. I know the issues could change, as, as Nicole pointed out, but what we know is going on right now, I think I could be a resource to the school committee. And I will say, to Janice's point, I'm going to back off of STRIDE. I'm going to come off of the principals advisor. I am going to back a few things off. It probably won't be an equal, but I've already talked to my family, they're in full support. And yeah, so that's sort of what my thinking has been.
Great. I think it's very interesting that you considered it before it was a, you know, an ola.
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Sure. All right, well, that about wraps it up.
All right.
And any final words?
No, I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity. I've really enjoyed, I don't know all of you, and I hopefully will have a chance to get to know each of you more and just have really enjoyed the conversation. So if, and if you have any other questions, you can of course reach out to me. So thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, we have Thomas Kesh. And I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did. Four letters, it's not that tricky.
Well, I used to be an erst, and it was very difficult, some people get that.
Understood. No, it's, Roger Kesh, very simple.
Kesh, very good. So we're asking each candidate to introduce themselves, explain why they want to be on, on the school committee, and who pointed will be run for a full term in the spring.
Right. A few things to say about that. First, thanks for the opportunity to hear. What I did not point out in any of my personal statements was a bit of family history. I come from a family that believe deeply in public service and civic engagement. That's true of both parents, it's true of my siblings, and it's something that's been with me really throughout my life. As far as my motivation to join the school committee, look, fundamentally, I'm a parent. We have, we have a son in the third grade. It was a great joy dropping him at school today. Saw Superintendent Burke outside cushioning, and it was incredibly heartwarming for him. He greeted by actually his first grade teacher. So the last teacher he had in person was there to put an arm around him and say, let me cushion. And that was pretty cool. The motivation really is to see that not only my son, our son, has the best possible educational opportunities made available to him, but that those opportunities are available to all kids from every kind of background, every kind of learning style in all schools. All of my motivation is informed by a career largely spent in higher education. I certainly don't have Kerry's credentials. But I've got a lot of time working in senior, externally based senior roles as a fundraising executive and prior to that as a admissions officer. In that work, I learned a great deal, not only about the fundamental value of education. We talk about what goes on in elementary education. Sitting and reading applications for six years, you're seeing sort of the outcome of that at the age of 18. Now, granted, in a very isolated, not exactly wide sweeping kind of way, but that experience to me was really quite formative and had a lot to do with why I'm here today. With respect to the other portions of my career as a, as a fundraiser, I learned a lot about consensus building, I learned a lot about listening. I learned a lot about advocating on behalf of an institution externally and on behalf of donors internally. I learned, I learned the significance of, of different contributions from staff, from faculty, that it wasn't simply about sort of digesting a message from a dean or a college president. It was about talking to executive directors of programs and administrators as well as faculty members responsible for classroom instruction. So all of that experience collectively brings me to a place where I think I have something to contribute, I'm interested in serving, and ultimately I'd like to, I'd like to see that my son have all of the opportunity in the world along with every other kid in town.
Very good. The question about running again?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I fully intend to run, sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Long?
Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Kesh. And as you've seen from a number of our school committee meetings, a lot of divisive issues come up and, you know, people in the public comment section, some feel strongly one way, some feel strongly another. And the role of the school committee is ultimately make the best decision for the, the district as a whole. So from your perspective, what would your approach be taking that large, potentially divisive issue from, you know, when the issue actually comes to the school committee to actually voting on it? You know, at whatever meeting they have voted?
Right. Well, first, obviously, fundamentally, you know, the announced issue itself. What's at hand, what, why are we talking about it? What's, what's at stake, what's at play? In terms of digesting different points of view, I come from a place where I, I, I look for opportunities to find the both and, not the either or. And so for example, as people have framed issues related to, say, diversity with, as both academic excellence, I, I see those two things as inextricably linked. That in order for us to be truly excellent, we need to embrace difference and difference in background, difference in opinion. But I think that it's incredibly important not to, to set those two things at opposition, to, to see them as part of a, a single larger point having to do with excellence and ultimately serving our, our students as well as we possibly can. So I guess I, I come to this from, I, I, I would come to the issues from that kind of point of view. I would look to my colleagues on the school committee, obviously, and as appropriate, look for input from, from leadership in the administration and for teachers. I wouldn't take, I wouldn't assume that it's my responsibility or in any way my role necessarily to communicate directly with staff. But I think it's important that this, as someone coming on to the school committee, I would come with a sense of humility that really the teachers are the experts here and in large part it's my job to learn from them and support. So that would be a part of my, my deliberation as well. Thank you.
Mr. Henneman?
Sure. I have a six-parted question.
Out of order.
With four subparts, very attractive. So you spoke a little bit, I, I, I guess I'll stay in line with what I was asking Carrie about two of the hot topics right now. We've got the diversity issue, which you mentioned briefly there. Its role, you know, what is the educational process of schools' role in that? And then probably more into the pandemic and education during the pandemic and your thoughts on, on that. I think those are topics that people want to know.
Sure, start with the, start with the pandemic. We made the choice for our son to start the school the year last year fully remote and stay fully remote. We did that with our own family's health in mind, our extended family nearby, and we did that on the vice of our pediatrician. And at the end of the day, when, when he had the opportunity to go back to school in person, for us, it was also a question of consistency in his routine and progress he could make that thus far in the school year. He actually thrived, to tell you the truth. And I realize that experience is unusual, but for us, it is what it is. So I think as far as, you know, masking, we're pro-mask. We, we, I say that pretty unapologetic. I think the science indicates pretty clearly that masking, proper ventilation, responsible distancing, and testing will, will carry us some distance. And I see no reason really to stray too far in the masking piece of that. You know, do I want to see my son in a mask for the entire time? Absolutely not. Do I want to spend this prime adult life in a mask more than, more than anyone else? Of course not. But, but I think that it's pretty clear in my mind that it's a sensible thing to do. We'll have data come October 1st to reexamine that decision. And, and I look forward to that moment. You know, I'd love to see vaccination rates get to the point they need to get to, and I'd love to see transmission rates do the things they need to do. And hear a lot about Delta variant and all that. But with that being, I can say comfortably, I'm, I'm in favor of masking. And, and, you know, at the same time, giving kids the opportunity to be kids. Carrie alluded to this, I'll say it as well. Our son wanted nothing more than to be with his friends. And being with his friends and wearing a mask, fair enough. I mean, not fair enough, but so be it. He was on board with that and we were, we were supportive of him. With respect to diversity and equity, again, I, I come from different kinds of roles, not as an academic, but different roles in higher education. I've seen the value of diversity in action. I've seen the significance of it to create a, 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 a supportive environment with students of different backgrounds, different ideas, and I think that's hugely significant. As you look at, as, as, as you look across college campuses and increasingly workplaces, I think people recognize the need for a degree of cultural agility, if that makes some sense, that ultimately larger corporations are going to look to promote talent from them for people who have been exposed to different languages, different backgrounds, different cultures. And I see no reason why we can't responsibly introduce that kind of thinking much earlier in the process. I, I firmly believe that. I think one of the great values of being in a town like situat is that we have an opportunity to bring folks together. And I'll pick up, I'm happy to pick up some of that in the follow-up too.
Tony asks questions and I have long answers. All right.
No charge.
So we have a lot of hot topics recently, you know, with the pandemic and remote learning and such. But how, how do you, how do you see yourself helping us focus on getting back to focusing on student achievement?
Right, student achievement. Well, I think to focus on student achievement is a question of deciding ourselves what the relevant metrics are going to be. Now, it's not my job as an individual school committee member to set that agenda. But I think, for example, that, you know, I, again, the sort of former admission officer in me gets a little frustrated by hearing people quote things like US News and World Report. I mean, I think that's a terrific, it's one limited metric of ways to measure. I mean, I think that's a terrific, it's one limited metric of ways to measure quality in some limited way, but the methodology of those rankings shifts from year to year, and I think that it's dangerous to assign too much value to them. Is it worth looking at, is it worth thinking about? Sure. But I think as we look at student achievement, I turn the faculty to provide the school committee some guidance on where we're going to look for those measures and outcomes. Think about the shift in story of the MCAS a few years ago. I think the MCAS is one place to look, but it's not the only place to look. And I think that there will be some reckoning that has to come out of the last year and a half, right? Our son was able to thrive in a remote setting, not everybody was, and my wife and I are well aware of that, and coming to this position, of course I'd be aware of that. The larger reality is not necessarily mine, and I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. So when it comes to measuring outcomes in a longitudinal way, let's start learning what we can from where we've been. I alluded to some of this in my personal statement. I think it'd be great if what we learned about remote learning could be applied in a positive way. We know it wasn't for everybody. Got it. But are there some lessons learned that could be applied to helping other kids catch up through electronic platforms in the classroom? But as far as measuring student achievement, I welcome the opportunity to return the conversation there, with budgeting and physical plan, all that exciting stuff the school committee usually does. But I think I'm guided primarily by wanting to hear from faculty and administration first and then coming to a set of metrics we can all agree on and work from there.
Thank you. Thank you. More?
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Thank you for coming forward. What issues do you think is the most pressing today for the school system aside from the diversity and the mask issues? What issue do you think is most pressing and how would you address it?
This may be a narrow take because I have a kid in Cushing, but the physical state of the schools, the state of Cushing has got to improve. And I think it's lovely that we have four elementary schools in this town. If we have less than four elementary schools in this town and the physical plan and the remaining schools is that much better, great, but I think that that has to be addressed. And it's clearly on the agenda in terms of state funding and potentially issues facing the select board at town meeting in terms of whatever budgeting the town has to do to sort of make these things a reality and getting the ball across the line in terms of ad-hocing that has to be done too. But I think that that's absolutely the most important thing facing us. And I say that, by the way, knowing that it's not our son who's going to benefit from that. It's going to be some other elementary school kid in a few years. He'll have a not-so-new gates to get to in a few years, but that's no building another few years off.
Thank you. Nicole?
Hi, Tom.
Did I skip you?
No.
Sorry.
What should a school committee member's relationship be like with the superintendent and then also parents and staff?
Right. I think fundamentally, the school committee, a school committee member needs to be sort of a 360 communicator, right? I think that one thing I've learned professionally is the value, again, I alluded to this earlier, the value of communicating with everybody around you, that it's not simply sort of regurgitating talking points from dean or senior leader, it's digesting that message and then shooting it through a filter informed by all sorts of other folks. So I think I'd be an active listener when it comes to parents. I would want to hear from them and I would want to sort of bring their messages to the school committee in a manner consistent with the school committee policy and be responsive along similar lines. In terms of a relationship with the superintendent, I think it's important, I'm a firm believer in what I guess people would call management by walking around. Nothing, I took no greater pleasure in working in a traditional office setting than being able to sit down in a colleague's office, so they come and sit down in mine and sort of talk something over. Now, does the superintendent have time in his day for someone to just drop into his office? Obviously not. And for the foreseeable future, we're dealing with kind of a different reality anyway. But I think that my approach to it will be informed by that kind of thinking, that I would want to communicate more, not less, that that communication, the informal communication ultimately builds a strong enough relationship that sort of the bigger formal stuff can get done more easily, if you've really established those kinds of relationships kind of fundamentally. And with respect to staff, I'd say something similar, although I'd be very mindful of not wanting to step out of any formal lane as assigned by school committee policy. But I think that I'd have a lot to learn from staff, from administrators, from fellow school committee members, from the superintendent, and I'd be in listening mode for the entire time, not merely the first 10 months on the job and then running toward later.
More?
I already went, I think. It's a winner's turn, although I'll take it.
Yeah.
Don't worry. Good. Thank you for coming forward. Sure. Extensive financial background with a lot of the fundraising side. I'd kind of love to get back to the budgeting aspect of it. I think our group, what's our per people now, like 16,000 per student like that? Basically, my question is, are we spending money wisely in areas?
Truly so. My sense is right now we're not spending money unwisely, but I'd want to dig into the budget and take a much deeper dive into the budget to see what that looks like. I want to know, and I want to benchmark against other communities. On one end, yes, I maintain a healthy kind of professional skepticism when it comes to something that I think is a moral report, but there is something to be said if we know that we're comparing apples to apples. I want to know what other towns are spending, what works, what doesn't, and I'd want to look historically at what we've done, how that relates, what the city schools have done historically, and how that relates maybe to other financial measures in town, how it relates to tax base, how it relates to average income in town and so forth, real estate taxes, sort of limit in relation to all of those things. As far as my own experience dealing with budgets, I haven't managed university-level budgets, I've managed staff-level budgets and team-level budgets. So I have some sense of the importance of getting down in a really granular sense in a way. How much money are you spending per student, per student per day? Do you want to do anything like that? I mean, you could continue tearing that data apart, and I'm open to that approach, but I want to know more, first of all, as I said, by kind of getting in on what I was with it, which I haven't done yet, learning from other committee members, but then also doing some benchmarking and plotting that against other financial data to maybe look inside the budget numbers a little bit differently than maybe we have previously.
Peter? Can I get a break?
You did. Thanks, Tom, for coming in. Thank you for reaching out prior to this, a little bit about the position. Appreciate that. I have a simple question that I asked Kerry, hope it's okay. Two-part, but the first one is simple. Are you familiar or comfortable with the responsibilities outside of the role of being a school committee member?
Yes.
In the liaison?
Right, right. And I understand it's possible I could be sort of slotted into roles as they currently exist, or there could be some shuffling. I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
Okay, great. And kind of, I think that for me, the importance of a relationship with the superintendent is important, so to build on what Nicole and other folk had asked. The question is, how do you balance managing issues that are brought to you by parents, stakeholders, or other special interest groups while supporting the superintendent?
Right.
It's really the question. I hope it comes to credit, but for me, that's a really important piece of the school committee.
Well, I think it's worth saying, when it comes to sort of a parent or constituent bringing an issue to us, to me, is this somebody who is interested in having a serious conversation about start times and impact on student sleep? Is this an outside organization? Is this some sort of crazy third party, either institutionally, judicially? What are you doing here, right? My commitment is to focus who are first and foremost constituents, right? Parents, students, residents of town. And I think there's going to be some outside noise around this stuff, and I want to, I say this upfront because I want to carve that out, right? To do that, to be supportive of the superintendent, look, I think that it's not hard to be responsive to people and hear them out while at the same time being very clear that my role is ultimately to help all students and to support schools. So I don't find that to be so difficult, a balance strike, that it would be beyond me or anyone else. I think that, I think that being clear with folks as they come to you about expectations. Somebody reaches out an email, you say, "I don't have an answer for you now, I can give an answer for you in X or Y." And if you don't have that answer within X or Y, you're expected to them within that window to provide that answer. I think that level of communication, that manner of communication builds trust in a way that's important, so that when it is time for me to say, "I hear you, I hear where you're coming from, this just isn't where we are and it's not where the superintendent is," to have that kind of conversation is going to go a whole lot better if you've been able, if you've operated in good faith up to that point and been able to say, "I said I'd get back to you at this point in time, I tried to have an answer for you, I just don't quite have it." Or if you do and they don't like it, well, then you can have a conversation that why they don't like it. But I think setting those expectations and sort of staying consistent with it on a professional basis goes a long, long way to then being able to sort of say, "When the time comes, this is where we are and we're not necessarily going to match." Great, thank you.
So we have 10 minutes left for follow-up questions. I'll take them as they, raise your hand. More?
Tom, collaborating with fellow school committee members is very important, but this is also your opportunity, speaking to the public, right? Because we are really elected officials and we represent the public. So what constituents do you feel you will be representing?
Well, it's my job to sort of hear everybody out and represent everybody. I think, where do I think my voice is probably resonates most consistently? Look, I won't agree with everybody on everything, but I am somebody, I come from this professionally where I'm able to take in different opinions and hear folks out. I think that represents a particular kind of candidate for this position, right? I think that, you know, does that reality kind of reflect any particular slice of town? I don't know. I guess I see for dads of single kids, of only kids. But yeah, I would come to this, I think, looking for opportunities to sort of learn more from other folks who maybe haven't been in my circles up to this point, right? I think one of the great things about serving in a role like this is that you have those opportunities to get to know people whose path wouldn't have crossed yours in whatever way, through whatever work I have done in other volunteer roles in town or other social circles or whatever it might be. And so that's something in the first 10 months of this position that I frankly embrace, that I look forward to sort of hearing from people I haven't otherwise heard from. I think Kerry alluded to this and I'll mention it too, I think the fact that the school committee now conducts, has conducted business on Zoom has been an enormously challenging thing in lots of ways, I've seen that, but it's also, I think, net incredibly positive, that more people are able to take part in the process, understand the process, and I think it gives people that much more opportunity to hear from one another regardless of whether or not necessarily grateful for one another at the outset. So.
Great, thank you. Other questions?
Tom, so a little while ago you talked about understanding how one town versus another doing an apples-and-apples comparison. So we, as members of the school committee, we talked to other people that we know on other school committees, the superintendent is part of a lighthouse group of superintendents. So a question for you is, what do you see as the line between following other towns and taking the best examples there versus keeping the citron?
Right. Well, I think, first of all, my observation is based primarily just on wanting to know more about data, kind of what it looks like from one place to another. Look, I'm a believer that there are best practices to be learned, there's always something to be learned from best practices as conducted elsewhere. Does that mean that it would have to do it that way? No. I think that it would needs to sort of be itself and be who we are. And if, for example, that means at the end of the day we have four elementary schools instead of combining a couple of them, okay. If that makes budgetary sense and has a sense for the physical plan and capital planning, then okay. But I do think that I want to learn what I can from those things, but at the same time stay very much grounded in who we are, where we are, and what our job is, which is to support kids here. And if there's something to be learned, not just from, the lighthouse group, I think, is a terrific example to point out in terms of an existing group already, but what else from around the state might we learn? And would that mean to, you know, we learn a whole lot from how business is done in a really large school system in a more urban setting? Probably not. But I do think there's some value in pursuing that data, and to the extent that there are some best practices that can be selectively plucked out of that, maybe, but that observation is mostly driven by wanting to look at some hard numbers as opposed to in any way, not in any way imitating other people.
No, I knew you were referring to the first time I was going to tease out the mindset behind it, but that helps.
Okay.
Andrew.
Tony has a question, but why not?
Yeah. Why not? So this is back a little bit to what I was just saying about Zoom, that here's an opportunity to participate in a meaningful way, serve the town in a meaningful way at a point in time when I think it's pretty clear that there are a lot of very strong opinions and big feelings. Sort of bring it to a third grade kind of kid. There are some big feelings and some opinions, and I think that what I can bring to the table is a kind of, is something kind of in the center of things and someone who's able to sort of take things in in a 360 fashion, as I said earlier, and use that kind of approach to inform decisions I make on the school committee. You know, I think, were it not, put it this way, were it not for the pandemic, and this is kind of one of these crazy hypotheticals that science teachers ask in high school or something. I have a physics teacher who would sometimes talk about a frictionless surface as a sort of assumption and problem, and you're like, "That can't happen, so why are we doing this?" But okay. But let's say there's no pandemic. I would want to be involved right now if only for the physical planning element of things. That's something that for me would have been an issue that would have brought me out as a candidate in one way or another, because that's something that really has to be addressed. And it's important that we get it right, not so much for kids now, but for kids in the next 20 years. So, yeah, I guess that's my answer. Sort of pandemic a little bit sort of brought me out as a candidate, but also that other particular issue would have got me out too.
So we have probably time for one more.
I'll ask a couple one-word answers and then ask it. Have you ever been to a school committee meeting?
I have been, have I ever been to a school committee meeting physically in a room? Or have I ever been to school committee meetings on Zoom? I've been planning on Zoom.
And before the pandemic, had you joined a meeting?
No, I haven't.
And will you run it if you lose?
That's a good question. Honestly, it would depend on who gets the position, you know?
Or you wouldn't, oh yeah, you wouldn't run against, it's who's up next?
Me.
Do you think you're better than me? So.
Actually, no, I'm going to back up for a second. It would depend, not only on what, but how they did it in the town, right? Anyone who's in this position basically has a 10-month job in it. And so it seems to me that the last answer is to say, "Yeah, I might run if I don't get the position now." It would depend on who it is and how they do it.
Right, well, I guess, you know, if you want to be involved, you get involved, you know? So two people will be up for election next year, and if you want to be involved, would you throw your hat in the ring? Or would you say, "No, I think Nicole and Bill are doing a good job, so I'll ride it out"?
Quite honestly, it would depend on what happens in the next 10 months. Taking nothing away from the work Nicole has done already as a member of the school committee, I keep an eye on her. And the same would be true of whoever else is in this position if I don't get it.
Yep. And I just want to add to your, clearly the capital issues of all the town buildings are an issue, but there's that whole money issue that comes into it and taxpayers' dollars. And what's your thought on putting overrides in front of the town, which it hasn't been too supportive over the years to do certain things? And it's not only by building a new building, because when the state is going to pay 45% of something, logic tells you, hey, we should do this. the state is going to pay 45% of something, logic tells you, hey, we should do this.
Right.
But a lot of it is maintenance. It's not, it's putting millions of dollars of maintenance into our building so that we don't have to rebuild them every.
Well, well, I think there's, there's a lively conversation in some circles around town at the moment about upkeep of grounds on school property and at the town library. And I happen to be involved with the library through the Library Foundation Board. So I'm, I'm a little bit tuned into that, that talk, I guess. Look, I think that if, I'm, I'm a believer in superintendent burka positivity, that we want to be the best school district in the world. And I think it's important for us staying true to that kind of positive take. It's important for us as a committee to be, to be willing to, you know, go the distance in terms of potentially dealing with overrides. Now, and the larger issue, am I a fan of sort of, does everything have to come to an overriding thing's done? I'd like to think not. But I think that the, the town has had to ask itself some hard questions over like, I, I've lived here 11 years. My wife and I moved here in 2010. The town has had to ask itself some hard questions with respect to overall physical maintenance, the schools, the water infrastructure, seawall, all sorts of stuff. And I do think it's, I, I think that the school committee, my take on this as some committee would be that if we really, if, if the committee, if the superintendent schools committee is fully behind the need for, you know, stronger, better, better physical space, then yeah, we've, we've got to go to the distance to get that done.
And we'll have to stop there.
Yeah. I will say this as a final thought. I want to thank all of you for what you do as public servants, especially these last 18 months. And I want to take a moment to just acknowledge and thank the others. I think it speaks volumes for the town that eight of us have come forward. And I wish everyone the best of luck and I wish all of you the best of luck in your deliberations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And now we have, oh, am I going to mess up this name? Mr. Thomas Gennarazio?
Yep.
Did I get it right? Trying to name somebody to see if there's some reason around it. So I think they're asking each candidate to introduce themselves, explain a little bit about yourself, why you'd like to serve on the committee. And finally, if you are appointed, would you plan on running for the full term? And it's probably going to be in May. And we're asking everyone to keep the opening statement to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Thomas Gennarazio. I live at 599 Countryway. I have two children in the school district right now, one at Hathaway, one at Gates. I'm a business owner in town. I run state bakery out of my barn. I have a residential kitchen license for the town and I'm a baker. I have about over a thousand customers now and I feed about 250 families a week. And so I get the, I get the pleasure of welcoming those people into my home. Before that, I was executive at a financial services firm. I was at, I was in finance services for about 15 years, most recently as the chief compliance officer for a broker dealer. Before that, I graduated from law school. I went to Boston University School of Law and my undergraduate degree is in history with minor philosophy. I grew up in Philadelphia. I'm a migrant from Vietnam. And that's me in a nutshell.
So why would you like to serve on the school committee?
Like I said, my upbringing response to the committees, you know, like I'm a grown-up. You didn't have much. When I came to the United States, I was two years old. I'm the youngest out of five. My dad was a single parent, didn't know the language. He was a press professor of Vietnam, but when we came over to this country, he didn't have any marketable skills. And so I looked my dad and, you know, he, when we came, we came with nothing. But he found a way to make something of himself. He did manual labor most of his life once we arrived. But what he can provide for us in material things, he advocated for our education. We grew up in one of the poorest communities in Philadelphia. And, and, you know, what he can provide for us in material things, you know, he made sure we got a good education. He pleaded with the local Catholic school to allow us to attend. And because that was really the only choice we had in that situation. You know, I know what it's like to live in an underprivileged area. I know what it's like to live in an unsafe area. And I know what it's like for, for children who don't have the means to, to, you know, foster an education. I know what it's like to struggle. And so part of the reason why I want to run is, is, you know, I have kids in the school system and I think I need to do a better job at advocating for them and advocating for all students in this town. Because I think, you know, people who are outside of Citrus seem to think that, you know, we're all privileged here and I don't think that's the case. I think there are a lot of families who struggle. And I think we all need to do a better job of making sure that everyone has a good education. I believe in strong academic academics, but I also believe in having a well-rounded education.
And if you're appointed, would you run for the full term?
Yes.
Mr. John.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight.
And we're limiting these to three, three minutes as well. So, because I think you just came and I just wanted to be sure you were grounded this year.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I apologize for coming in. I didn't know we were allowed to come earlier. I didn't want to get any advantage by, by having any questions in advance.
So one of the things that the school committee has to deal with on a regular basis is answering or going on things that might be divisive or very polarizing within the town. For something that is, you know, large and divisive in the town, what is the thought process you would take from when the issue initially comes to the school committee all the way until we actually, until we actually go on it, you know, kind of mayor?
I mean, I think having an open dialogue is key. I think, you know, I try to stay away from Facebook because it's just, you know, it's one of the things where, you know, people say things to one another online that they would never dream of saying to someone face to face. And it's disheartening at times. And for me, having an open dialogue with people is key. Sometimes I think watching the school committee meetings, it's hard to see the thought process behind some of the, the decisions. And even though, you know, some of these meetings run really long and we don't want them to be longer than they have to be, I think there's a sense of within the community that, you know, there are decisions being made that, you know, don't have a stake in. But I think you guys have done a great job legally, especially when it came to the issue of masks, to, to ask for public opinion, to welcome public opinion. I think those things are key. But at the end of the day, I think as a good school committee member, you know, has to be open about their opinions, their reasoning, but at the same time, they shouldn't be afraid to be devil's advocate too. Because these, all these, all these arguments have to be laid out. I mean, I'll, I'll give a perfect example. And, you know, when, when it came to the issue of removing, you know, Columbus Day from the school calendar, you know, it's not a decision that I disagree with, but at the same time, you know, one of the questions that, you know, I, I thought was lacking was, you know, well, how does that affect the curriculum? I, I would have liked to see one of the members of, of the leadership in the school district, you know, talk about, okay, was this, I'm assuming they'll lead up to Columbus Day, you know, within the elementary schools at least, that there's some talk about, you know, what Columbus did, that era in American history. As a student of history, you know, it's, for me, it's, it's important that, you know, we use every opportunity to go over, over, you know, history. So, you know, I think some of those, I think some of those things should be fleshed out more in a public setting. But at the end of the day, you know, it's, I, I have nothing to lose. I think as a minority, I think I were, I, you know, I grew up thinking that people are already, are making assumptions about what I think or going in or, and I think we, but I want to say that generalize that to just minorities, I think people in general. But, you know, I think you just can't be afraid to speak your mind and I'm not frightened.
Great. Tony?
Hey, Tom. And you do make wonderful bread, by the way. The sourdough is outrageous.
Did you bring it?
I had it for breakfast. So I'm going, I'll go back to the question I was asking at the end there. You've decided to put your hat in the ring and do this. Was there this ah moment that caused you? Was there an issue that said, hey, I need to get involved now? What, what is that thing that said, okay, now whatever your strength is, and comment on that too, is going to be really be helpful for this board?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think the older my children get, and, you know, growing up, I was in a family that we all excelled because we had to. My dad worked 16 hours a day. He was not often around and, you know, my older brothers, sisters, both my parents were saying, and, you know, I grew up with the automatic expectation that I should do well. I have a child who, you know, you just don't know until you become a parent that other child's learned different, children learn differently. And so, you know, the older he got, the more I felt like I was a bit removed from his education. And I saw him struggling at school in certain respects, especially this past year and a half with COVID. My child is just not a child that does well in remote settings. And I think a lot of children struggle, but not just that, but, you know, in class, in classic classroom settings as well. But I think, you know, the thing that, of course, you know, there's also the issue of, of DEI and, and I think we've seen a lot of division within the town because of that. And I think for me too, looking at the dialogue online, looking at the dialogue within the school committees, it's surprising to me that there's not a person of color within the committee. You know, I think for a town that is, is looking for diversity, that there should be someone of color or someone from the gay community or whoever to offer a different perspective. And so that's one of the other things. The third thing is also, you know, I'm a stickler for policies and procedures. As a chief compliance officer at an investment firm, I mean, I spent my days dealing with the SEC, FINRA, state regulators. And, you know, I was the person in charge of policy and procedures at my firm and, and making sure that they're implemented and coming up with new and better ones. And so I'd like to, I think where I can contribute also is looking at the current policies and procedures for this committee, for the school district, and to see if there are ways that we can improve upon them. Especially when it comes to transparency, I think a lot of what people talk about transparency, it's, you know, people who like to use that as a slogan or, or, you know, but when you're dealing with minors, you know, if a minor commits a crime within this town at the school or outside the school, no one knows about because they're entitled to privacy. I think if students within our school get into trouble, I think they should be entitled to that same level of privacy. And I think oftentimes, you know, people expect transparency and some of the things that, you know, are written to the, to the town or to the, to the entire school committee, no one will, will ever get a clear picture of what happened and how the school is actually going to go about dealing with the issue. And oftentimes people are left with a sour taste in their mouth. I think we've seen a lot of this happen, especially when it comes to DEI. There's a lot of room and speculations and, now, at a certain point, you have to, you have to know that you're dealing with minors and that, you know, that's, that's another part of policies and procedures I would like to work on.
Yes. How would you determine priorities when it comes to the budget?
Well, you know, I'm assuming like every other sort of public entity, you know, there's not much room within the budget for wiggle room. I'm sure the bulk of it is for, is for staffing and infrastructure and all that stuff. And so I'm not going to come here and pretend that I know too much about that because I don't, you know? All I can say is that I'm a fast learner and I'm good with the numbers. But, you know, we have a lot of stuff we need to get done. I mean, how we're going to do, I mean, the town can't even solve its, its groundwater problem. And now we have to contend with coming up with a solution for Hathaway and pushing. And that's going to be a huge priority. But, you know, as far as the budget is concerned, you know, obviously the, the more we can put towards academic programs, the more we can put towards allowing kids who, I mean, I'm, I'm privileged to, I'm privileged in that if my child is struggling in a specific subject like that, I can hire a tutor at $200 an hour to help them. Not everyone has that. And so there should be, I, I think we could be doing more, you know, to help students who are struggling with those type of tutoring and, and, you know, and of course, you know, I think extracurricular activities are important. But, you know, but at the end of the day, you know, our academics have to be important. I mean, not to say that academics are everything because, I mean, obviously I went through seven years of higher education and then I ended up being a baker, which is, I think, the best use of my time and I would check that earlier, so.
Well, we're glad you're a baker. I had the pleasure of having, but I follow you on Instagram, so my mouth waters constantly. So thank you for coming forward. I'm curious, you know, something that hasn't been talked about this evening is one role of a school committee member is playing a part on the negotiating team for the teacher's contract, which is in the process, in my understanding today. What skills would you draw from, you know, your professional and personal life that you could bring to that negotiating team to achieve a, an equitable and well result?
I mean, contracts wasn't anything that I specialized in in my legal career. But if you've ever read the SEC rules or FINRA rules, I mean, there's, there's a tremendous amount of tediousness that's involved in all of that. I'm assuming in teachers' contracts and, you know, dealing contracts, it's a lot of the same thing. I mean, obviously I'll be looking for advice from superintendent, from other community members, but, I mean, I am, as far as looking at contracts, I think I'm well versed enough in certain legal terms to be able to, you know, grasp at least some of the basic concepts. I look there. I consider myself a decent writer and I think I'm good at analysis, legal analysis. So, and I'm also good at Googling, if I don't really answer for a second.
Thank you. Nicole, any questions? And what do you see as the primary objectives for this board?
For this board? Primary objective? I think, you know, if you compare it to anything else, you know, it's, I view the superintendent as the CEO and the committee as the board of directors, as the company's board of directors. And I think the primary role of the board is to, you know, it's just not about, just about setting policies and procedures, but it's about challenging, you know, people in leadership positions to do more, to do better, challenge, you know, challenge this school district to be better at what it's, it's currently doing. And also we're in a position where we can learn from mistakes, you know? Not every committee or not every person in a position of leadership is going to get things right the first, the first time around. And I think we should, we need to be good at owning up to these mistakes that we make and to find ways where we can be better, you know? And I think, I think we are in a position where we're the face of the school district to the constituency of this town, the taxpayers. I welcome, you know, feedback from, from members of the community. And I think where I can help in that respect is, you know, I welcome 250 people in, in the town into my home every week. You know, I have well over a thousand customers, but, you know, when I see divisive issues being played out online, it's interesting to me to see half of those individuals on one side and half on the other. And I look at, you know, the comments and, and I look at these people, I'm like, these are all great people. You know, there's no reason why we can't have a productive dialogue about what needs to be accomplished in this town. And there's no issue that is so divisive that we can't, you know, it's easy to allow outside politics and outside, whatever's happening nationally to affect what's happening in Citrus. And as a resident of Citrus now since 2013, as a person of color, as someone within the gay community, as, as someone who has, you know, a, a, a child of color, you know, we've had nothing but good experiences here in Citrus. I think that, I, I don't know what it was like a few years ago, but the community that I live in now, you know, I'm, I'm proud to live here. And I think any person of color would work their butts off to have the privilege to live in a town like this. And so there's really nothing that I see that a town like Citrus can't overcome. And there's nothing so divisive that we can't talk to one another reasons without.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you for stepping forward. Put your hat in the ring. You've actually, you brought this up a few, few different times about academic quality. What do our teachers and our students need? What are your ideas or kind of thoughts to improve academic quality? What are your ideas or kind of thoughts to improve academic quality? I think you mentioned a little bit of that, but.
I think the thing that, I mean, I can only speak from personal experience. I mean, and I'm, I'm going to be 44 soon, but, you know, it's, I grew up and the focus was always on academics, on math and, and science and, and reading and, and, you know, and that's what I was always focused on growing up. But as I became older and, you know, I went to law school and I went to, and I majored, you know, I did things all for the wrong reasons. And then what, and what finally struck me when I decided to give up my career to start my own business was that, in life you've got to follow your passions, you know. And I think what we could be doing within the school system is to teach kids that success comes in many different forms. You know, not every child will strike best in a university setting. You know, whether a child is going off into higher education or if they're starting their own business or if, you know, they're learning a skill trade, if they're going straight to work. I think we could do more, teach them entrepreneurial skills. I think, you know, to be self-starters, be hard workers, to think outside the box, simple finance, you know, things like that, how to write a business plan. I would love for our students to have, be taught more entrepreneurial skills. Because I think in a town like this where we have a rich history of, you know, lobstering and, and other things where, you know, it's, not every child from Situate is going to find the right fit in higher education. And even though, you know, that's always the goal, I mean, I think, you know, more education is better than less. But not every child will fit into that mold. And I think when a child leaves Situate High School, they should have the confidence to follow their dreams, start a business, you know, learn a trade. I mean, I, if my son were to come to me and say, you know, I want to learn to be an electrician, I would hallelujah, you know, because that's, you know, if that's the path you want to go on, great. And it'll save me a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Don't be so sure. Peter?
All right. Thank you, Tom, for coming forward. Appreciate your time. Kind of asked similar questions to the prior candidates. First one, it's kind of a two-part related, but as with any school committee role, there's not just the responsibility of being a school committee member. Are you aware of the other top commitments relative to liaisons and subcommittees that you would be part of?
Yes. You know, I, I have the benefit of working from home. And I, my schedule is pretty flexible and, you know, I realize the, to understand to have community.
No, the Zoom, the Zoom meetings have made our community much more efficient, but I think right now most other ones are in person. So sometimes it can be cumbersome for sure. So, you said you've been here for what, eight, eight years?
Since 2012.
Yeah, so you probably witnessed, we've been through three superintendents, or on our third superintendent in the last five years. So my question is relative to kind of the relationship with the superintendent. But how do you balance managing issues that are brought to by parents, other stakeholders, special interest groups, while also supporting the superintendent?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think built into that question is supporting the superintendent. I mean, I think the role of the school committee is not just to support the superintendent. I think it all depends upon the situation presented to the school committee. If there's a concern with a member of the public. I mean, I think the automatic, I, I don't, I don't want to say that this is what you're implying. But, you know, I think for me, it's, you know, when you say balancing the needs of public with the needs of the superintendent, I mean, I think we have to work objectively as the superintendent of a school committee to assess the performance of the superintendent. And to look at any concerns perceived by the public, from the public to the school community seriously. And I, but I think we're more capable of doing that. I think, you know, the superintendent's job, I don't envy, I don't envy in that position. That is a very, very difficult position. And again, like any other position, you don't automatically get it right the first time around. But I think, you know, like any other position, you offer that person a number of years to accomplish the specific goals that we as a community ask for. And, you know, we look at it day by day, week by week, year by year. And I, and I think like any other leadership position, each one of us have to hold ourselves and hold one another accountable. If that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have the timekeeper here. We have about seven minutes left for any follow-up questions. Tony?
So if you had unlimited resources in terms of finance and manpower to deal with one initiative in town, what would be the, in, in the schools, in the town? What would you, what would you pick and why?
I think it would obviously be pushing and handling. I think, you know, being a parent who's, I mean, I've had two kids that go through Hathaway. And each year it's, it's a bit discouraging to see, you know, the building falling apart. And, and, you know, I, I think the environment in which a child learns is better to learn than. You know.
So the capital?
Yes, and I, I mean, I think that's going to be a very, I mean, a very interesting, you know, you guys have been through with the current middle school, I'm sure it was not fun. You know, but I think infrastructure is one of those things that, you know, is, is going to be the nagging issue with this town and not just with the, with the schools, but also about groundwater problem. But I think infrastructure is going to be key. But, you know, I think, I think again, academics and, and having programs to offer children who, you know, don't have access to the same opportunities that my children have, I think that's also a worthwhile endeavor. So yeah, those two things.
Other questions? Mark? Tom, could you describe for us your leadership style?
I try to, I mean, I think, I'm not a micromanager at all. I think what, so when I was the chief compliance officer and I had a team that reported to me, you know, I'm, I'm more about, you know, we're all professionals. You know, we're all here because we're capable. And, you know, but we're also all here to hold each other to task and to challenge one another. I think it's one, I think the more we can do to get one another excited about, you know, the plans that we have for this school district and for this, and for our students, goes a long way, you know. I think, you know, I, I, I like to speak bluntly. I don't like to really dance around issue. When I look at some of the school committee meetings, I'm always looking for more challenging questions because they're, they're oftentimes when I watch a school command meeting and then afterwards, I'm like, ah, someone should have asked that question, you know. I think it's great to be devil's advocate, not, not that you, you know, agree or disagree on an issue, but, you know, you, you make arguments that you think some people may, may have an issue with in town and let that play out so that people can watch and, and feel as though their feelings or their concerns are being addressed. And so being open, honest, speaking plainly and not doing anything personal. You know, I think, you know, I mean, as a baker, there, I don't get many complaints on my bread, but if someone complains about my bread, I'll take it personally. It might be your taste buds, but, you know, so, you know, as a school committee, it's like, and that's why I stay off Facebook, just because, you know, people like to make assumptions about people on the committee, you know, and, and, or anyone else in a leadership role within this town. And, you know, I know who I am. You know, I, I've had my fair share of people making assumptions about me, you know, I mean, so I don't, that doesn't bother me.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in. Sorry you had to come in there.
I don't know, I guess I'm somewhere there. I work from here, sorry. And I apologize for not being in a suit, but after I stopped working in an office, I told myself that I was avoided at home.
You weren't fine.
It's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Ms. Lee Harms. How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome. Were you here for the others in terms of the questions, including yourself?
Yeah.
Why would you want to be on the school committee and would you run if you were appointed for the full term?
Yes, my name is Lee Harms and I am currently a teacher in Cohasset at the elementary school. I teach first grade, it seems our first day. So if I'm blurry-eyed, that's why. I have three children in the Situate school system, one at Situate High School, he's a senior, one in sixth grade, he started middle school today, and one in fourth grade, Walthatuck. I moved here seven years ago and the reason I chose Situate was because the ratings on rate school dot org at the time, Walthatuck was a 10 out of 10 and I'm a researcher as far as school scores go. And that's what me, what made me decide on Situate when I was looking at the South Shore. I would run again if you guys would have me and it was chosen. For sure, I'm passionate about education. We called it the school board, I grew up in Tennessee and from the time I was in college, I went to be on the school board. Education was always part of my life. I was always, I always wanted to be a teacher and even in college, all my jobs revolved around education.
I'm sorry.
Mike, Mike.
I get it.
It's been a while.
Think we need to do like stretching, right?
Well, thanks for coming on today. So one of the things that the school committee happens to deal with is a very divisive issue with people coming in to a school committee meeting with, you know, one, one group of people on one side and one group on another. So my question for you is, for an issue like that, what would your thought process be from when the issue comes to the school committee up until we ultimately go down it?
Well, I think everything should be collaborative process. But like with the mask mandate, I'm just going to use that as an example so it's easier for me to do it. And I was in one of those today too. But I think that you should take as much information from experts. Like if we were talking about the mask, it'd be the CDC, it would be the state dashboard, all the data and make an educated response on what the decision is. Take all the data, combine with people's thoughts, make sure you value people's opinions as well because people want to be heard and know that they're heard by the school committee. But take into all the other factors as well before making the decision. I hope that answers that.
Tony?
Good evening, thanks for coming in. So you're a first grade teacher in Cohasset school system?
I just, yes.
Their school committee is a little, you know, not plays good as ours. And I'm wondering what things have happened over the years that you wish that the Cohasset school committee would have done differently or had seen a better perspective of or decisions that they may have made that you didn't quite agree with?
This is going to be publicly seen, right? This should be like a hit along with this education. No, so there's been a lot of.
And I, I don't want you to say, I, I mean, what, what type of stuff is going to come before the school committee that you as a teacher, from your perspective, see as, you know, issues that, that are controversial or that you may have agreed of or not agreed with or?
There's been a lot. And I, and that's probably to do with the turnover of superintendents too. I've experienced three in seven years in Cohasset. So I think it's a tough, it's a tough crowd right now, too. One was the mask mandate, just starting the school year and saying that we're going to end it in October. But I feel like that that happened in the past too and you give a date almost to appease people knowing that we have no idea what's going to happen with that and the Delta variants. There was a very long school committee meeting recently, I think six hours, where it went back and forth about pro-mask, against mask. Honestly, as teachers, you're, you do what comes from the superintendent. And we trust that the school committee is making an informed decision. We have, we were all vaccinated, they had a date for us to be vaccinated, the students. The young ones that I have are not, my younger children are not, my older one is. So I, I would always err on the side of caution when it's to do with masks. I did agree with keeping masks. I don't see what it would hurt as a teacher. I am so tired of wearing them. I think there's going to be some kind of gap with kids with speech and language because they can't see foreign sounds and expression. And, you know, you can see eyes, but they're little kids and they just see you smile at them and those kind of things and, and be close and they're all three feet apart still. So that was a big factor for us opening school is we didn't know if we were going to have tables or desks and if they had to be three feet apart and if we were going to get our horseshoe table or our rug to have groups on. So there was parts that I agreed with and parts that I disagreed with. But you trust that everybody's making those decisions based on that. And I think erring on side of safety is always the best bet. Because if it comes to my own children's health and wellbeing, that's what I would want people to do. I'd want them to look at the data and I would want them to make the safest decision for my children. So I was for the mask. There was an issue last year about whether we should return from hybrid or from fully remote to hybrid before the teachers were vaccinated. I personally did not agree with that. I thought that we should be vaccinated for safety. Primarily, mainly really wasn't for myself, it was for my friends that I knew had underlying health issues. And it was just making them more compromised to think that they could possibly get COVID and not have that extra protection. It was overruled, the school committee and the superintendent decided to go back. And once we were back, it was great to see the kids in person again. So you see like the pros and cons of everything. And I think being in the education system and being a teacher and being a parent, I see, I kind of see all the sides. And I'm also have just, I can't say enough good things about my children's teachers. And I've taught in many different districts and I, I was laughing because I actually forgot one of the places that I taught was not on my thing because I was in Los Angeles too. But I've seen many different districts, I've seen many different teachers. And I'll say that Situate are some of the best I've ever seen. And I feel like the district I was in in San Diego was one of the best as well because the principal that's in Cohasset now, I worked with in San Diego. So it's hard to be a school committee member when you see that there are people that disagree with what you do, but you have to do what you think is best and what you're agreed upon as a decision.
Thanks.
Janice?
Hi. So with all those other hot topics going on, how does the school committee stay focused on student achievement?
That's really tough, I would think. That's why meetings go for six hours sometimes. You have to make that. I think all those other decisions though are focusing on student's achievement. All the different learning models, there was so much thought put into that. I know we looked at Situate's, I know other districts did as well. I know that whole South Shore kind of looks to see what each other's doing, what's working, what's not working. But I think the achievement has to always be the, you know, one of the focuses. I think there's so many other things too, but you have to deal with some of those hot topics first then. You can't decide whether to go to school, you have to know whether you're going to wear masks or not before you can talk about student achievement. But you have to know what to do for school to go, so.
Thank you.
Mark? Hi, Lee, thank you for coming in. What issue do you think is most pressing that is facing our Situate school system today? And what are your thoughts on addressing that issue?
I'm seeing number one right now, it's just.
And I was going to say aside from DEI masks, I want to, I want to put that aside. We'll, we'll park those two issues because I think those are pretty apparent to everybody. So sorry.
Are we talking about the physical building or are we talking about academics?
Up to you, issues.
Well, I hear a lot of different things. The facilities, definitely. My children went to Walthatuck. I feel like out of the elementary, well, I think Jenkins is in good condition, obviously. It's the newest of the four. Wauwatosa, my children attended, but I know the other two have a lot of issues from what I've heard and I've always been there for sporting events and practices and things like that. I think that's a very important factor because it's not only the students, it affects the teachers and the, you know, staff as well. But I also think salaries, I think probably anytime there's a salary negotiation, it's very important to retain teachers to keep salaries competitive with other districts. I know that sometimes when teachers have more years' experience and further degrees on salary scale, sometimes they get looked over and I know that, I know that happens in districts all the time because I have friends, they're principals, they look at the range of school spring, if you have more than 10, they don't even look at you because you cost too much. And I think sometimes that rules out a lot of really quality teachers. So I think keeping salaries competitive is very important as well as facilities. There's, and curriculum is also, needs to be updated, you know, every few years. We're going through that right now with our language arts curriculum and our math curriculum and then the teachers have to be trained. So you always have to think anytime something is changed, as far as curriculum, there also has to be professional development provided for the teachers as well.
Sure.
Hi, Michael. So what is your understanding of the school committee's budgeting process and what you see as upcoming priorities? Can you sort of answer that piece a little bit?
I don't know a lot about the budgeting process, but I know of all the school districts I've worked before. I would think right now, it seems to be the facilities are the hottest topic as far as what I hear from, you know, the public, from parents, those kind of things. And like I said, I kind of hear from different sides, the teachers as well, but I think the facilities are the number one concern about the public. It's kind of hard for parents to know about the curriculum and things like that because I feel like that's not shared as much, but keeping the curriculum current and competitive with the United, you know, the entire United States is important too, to see where we compare with other districts as well.
Andrew.
Thank you for coming out. Of course, I've actually asked before, still here, Tony, about why, was there something that really prompted you, so why now?
Well, I saw there was an opening, I had no idea there would be eight and they were amazing, by the way. Everybody had great, I mean, had so many great things to bring to the table, but it is just always been a personal role of mine, like I said, I've always been in education. I have many years' teaching experience, have been served on many committees, but not on a school committee on the other side. It's always been on the teacher's side, so, or on, you know, the parent's side too because when I stayed at home for a few years, I also did those things too, so.
Great, thank you. Two quick ones, one quick one. Other than being a member of the school committee area, where are the other responsibilities that go around being a school committee member such as liaisons and subcommittee?
Yes.
Positions and the time frame relative to those?
Yeah.
Okay. You just mentioned that Cohasset's been through, what'd you say, three superintendents in seven years? So Citrus is technically on its third in five, technically. So my question also is, how do you balance managing issues raised by parents and other stakeholders all while trying to support the superintendent?
I'm going to speak from, again, from my experience, but I see that the school committees work very closely and collaborate, you know, they collaborate, collaborate with the superintendent. And I was thinking about when someone's talking about the walks, our superintendent takes walks with members of the school committee through the school and checks out the classroom and those kind of things and I feel like they're very, they work very well together when making decisions. When they're, they exchange the information very well too. I feel like the school committee and the superintendent are sometimes on one side and the rest of the staff is on another side. So I would hope that you could take information from everyone and make decisions that way as well.
Thank you.
So we have a few minutes left, about ten minutes left before following questions. Andrew was already raising his hand.
Just curious, what are some best practices or things you've seen at Cohasset that you think might translate here?
Specifically academically?
Sure.
I'll have to say like, I really have been impressed with the teachers that my children have had on all levels and I see everyone, my senior in high school. I'm trying to think on the side of Cohasset. I'll have to say, this is not a best practice really, but the facility that I teach in is amazing. It's upstairs and downstairs, we have six first grade, six second grade, six kindergarteners right now and an integrated preschool in the building. I know that my daughter complains about it being too hot in school sometimes, so I never complain anymore when it's too hot because we have AC in our school. So I think that sometimes that can affect learning when you're just not comfortable. Best practices as far as teacher training? We have dedicated professional development days, which I know Citrus does as well. But like we just had one, a three-hour training for dyslexia, which I wanted to know more about. So I think that the training involved, we just adopted a new math curriculum and we did a pilot of it last year. I think the adoption of new series is really important and a good best practice and the training that we went to involve with that. We each had to be trained on it, we did a pilot of it and then almost a full year, I don't want to say because we were teaching it, but we were still wearing it as we were teaching it. So I really think that they have tried to be competitive, you know, with other districts as well to keep us up to date on the latest things as well. And technology has, with hybrid learning and we've all dealt with it. I have four computers going at once in my house at all times and trying to teach while they were learning for them, so I saw all sides of that as well, but keeping the infrastructure going in the schools and I know that we have iPads now for the kids and remember on first, so it's more like listening to reading and things like that. But I think the assigning Chromebooks, making sure that everybody has a device and not just five devices in a classroom is really important. And again, I think the teachers are huge, like making sure you retain your good teachers is definitely best practice too because they are, they are what is getting the learning app to our students and, you know, keeping it competitive as well.
More?
You had mentioned that in your experience, you've seen, you know, school committees and superintendents aligned and the staff feeling disenfranchised. So drawing from that experience, what steps would you take to collaborate and achieve consensus and bridge that gap?
And I don't know the history of the school committee, but has, like, for example, our PTA has a staff representative that comes and sits at the meetings and kind of speaks on behalf of the teachers, says this is what we're doing in our classrooms, these are maybe things that we were requesting monetary funds for to improve our classrooms. So maybe there could be a teacher representative on the school committee that could speak on behalf of the teachers. And unions are much bigger here than anywhere I've ever lived before. So we have a teacher representative that represents the union, so maybe something like that. But I don't know how it works here as far as that goes, but somebody that could be the voice of the teachers.
I have a question, you mentioned in class was a pre-K through two in the school that you teach at?
Mine's pre-K through two and then three through five is Dear Hill and then class of middle, class of high. So we have one big.
So my question here, I think all the candidates mentioned, it was interesting that the facilities have a cushion where the most in need. So my question to you is, do you see it as a benefit if the district were to build a new K through two facility as opposed to a new school that would be K through five?
I've seen a lot of different setups as far as that go. I think it's awesome, I really like my school, our principal, vice principal are amazing. I think it takes a strong leader when it's such a big school to have that many classrooms and that many teachers to manage. But personally speaking, I think it works great. So, and I've been, I've been in, when we lived in San Diego, our school was within the neighborhood. So it was right in the center, it was a hub for activities like Boy Scouts and all outside things, you know, Saturday schools and things like that. So I love that aspect of that school because of that. I felt like it was the hub of the middle of the neighborhood and brought people in and it served a lot of things. But I do think the pre-K through two is a great model for our district.
Just ask one, I think because you have the teaching experience, you should, you know, give a good perspective to the board from that point of view. But how are you going to deal with situations where tough decisions have to be made that the teaching association do not agree with?
We don't always do agree with the teachers' association, I.
Well, not necessarily with the teachers, I know, I don't mean the, but oftentimes the school committee has to make difficult decisions that the teachers don't agree with.
Well, I've seen that because we have, there's somebody in our school committee that teaches in Citrus and I remember running in her and being like, you've had a tough crowd lately, but it's just part of doing it. It's like any, any position, just like being a teacher in a classroom, not everybody's going to agree with what you do, but they will respect that you stand for what you vote on. Like if I voted on something, period, in life, I'll give you the reasons why I voted for it and not have somebody sway my opinion because of what they did. It would be an informed decision where I've gotten as much information I can from the people that are experts in this field. I'm not a medical professional, just like the mask mandate, I can't make that decision.
Yeah, I think, I guess my point is, there's going to be additional emotion or pressure or something on, potentially on your role because you're seen as one of, one of them, you know? And it's, you know, not that you can't handle it or anything like that, but I think it's another perspective to think of as the person in Citrus probably does too, sitting in that role from the other side.
Well, anyone that would be a friend to me would respect me no matter what decision I made and would still be my friend, just like if somebody was a Democrat or Republican, you could still work together, correct?
I'm not, I'm not, yeah. I'm just saying the, that there's a new, there's a twist to it that you're going to have to deal with that they're not going to have to deal with.
Right.
And there's a good twist to it too, right? You're going to be able to take the perspective.
Sorry, I want the teachers' union too.
Oh, it's fine.
That might be an error.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I get it.
It's dual.
Right. But sometimes it's. It's good to have that perspective too, you know, as well, I think. Because I've been on all, I feel like I've been on all the sides now. I was very involved when I was a parent, as a parent, I don't have, you know, not as involved now, obviously. And then on the teacher's side, I, you know, on the different sides of it and I like that. So I feel like I can have the different perspectives and the different lenses sometimes that, you know, I wasn't able to have when I was younger. When I first started teaching, I loved it and it was great, but I remember thinking like, seriously, this parent is asking me again about the snack or whatever it was. But then when I had my first, you know, child, I was like, I feel bad for even thinking that. You know, and I had this, then you see the parent's side of it. So now I can have the teacher's side, the parent's side, you know, the friends of the teacher's side and the friends that form the school committee and the superintendent because I like our superintendent too and our school committee members, I respect them that they have to make these decisions. And just like a principal that I had once, I remember she didn't make a decision that I wanted and she said, I'm sorry, I have to do what's best for the school and I still love her and respect her for that because she didn't do something that I really wanted her to do because she didn't think it was best for the school.
Anybody else? Well, thank you.
See, you talked about.
I hope people are on their own today, by the way, so let's go ahead.
Well, we just met today, so.
I can teach you.
One of the things that you talk about a lot is the connection between the teachers and the superintendent of the school committee. What do you, one of the things that the school committee has to deal with, obviously, is, you know, because we're a public board, we can't sit in a corner somewhere and have a conversation and it all has to be in a public meeting. So what do you see as being important for a school committee to make sure that they have that best practice of being transparent and as open with the community as possible while also having to make that final decision?
Are you saying not publicly speaking about an issue that you're voting on?
No, I'm just saying, you know, how do you, in your mind, how does the school committee make sure that they're as transparent as possible with the community and having that, you know, not having people in the community think, oh, well, you know, they're, they've already made a decision before they came to the meeting, they don't, you know, they're just coming in, not even know how they're going to vote.
Got it. That's a great question. I'm assuming that there's a protocol involved in every decision-making. I hope, so yes, I hope. So you're asking if the transparency, if we would be transparent about it?
No, I'm asking how, how you as a school committee member would make sure that you, your, Citrus will say you're very transparent, you're very open with how you're starting the conversation and then getting to a, publicly making your vote.
I personally am, and it's open book anyway, but I probably would not want to speak about something that I was getting ready to vote on very much in a public forum, is that what you mean?
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's a different. The first case of.
So one of the things that, you know, people at any time will say is, well, the school committee came to a meeting and they voted on something and, you know, I didn't feel like I had a say or I didn't feel like they were fully transparent with the topic that came into the meeting and how they could potentially vote on it. So the school committee, you know, one of the things we try to do is make sure that we're as transparent as possible to the community, whether it's answering emails or how we, you know, try to conduct the business during the meeting and make sure people have, here's what we're going to vote on or here's what we, you know, could be potentially voting on in our meeting. So how, you know, not getting necessarily to public forums, but how would you make sure, from a school committee perspective, that, you know, you have that connection with the community so that they understand that, you know, you're taking everything that they say into account and not just coming in and voting?
Well, I think if somebody comes to you about an issue, you just have to make sure that they feel valued, period, that you're listening to them and that you're responding to them. Again, not everybody is going to like what you have to say, that you can say, I hear what you're saying and I'm going to make the most thoughtful decision, educated decision that I can.
That, that's where I was coming from.
Okay. Sorry, I'm.
Well, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it. And with that, I think we're done for the evening, we will have schedule.
Thank you. I think that's all you do too.
Thank you.
So tomorrow night, same question.
Yep.
I have a question. Okay, right, okay. There was a question about, this is a scheduled question. Yonkers is on, it starts, is it 6:35, 7:30?
Like 6:52.
6:52 on.
What is it?
The 15th. So the question is, do we think we could start perhaps at 5:30 in the hopes that if we've got a deadline of 7:52 that night? Do, does anyone need to leave before that? I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, committee, are they?
Yeah.
The day of the week, then?
Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, Wednesday the 15th. So it starts on Wednesday and it goes. So it starts on Wednesday and it goes to the next sundown, yes?
Yeah. So it's basically like seven o'clock Wednesday to seven o'clock Thursday essentially.
Right.
I think the real question is how long is this deliberation to take? I don't really know. Could take 10 minutes or could take a couple hours. I don't really know.
Well, honestly, I think if it took, if we realized that we weren't going to make the seven o'clock-ish time, we could adjourn the meeting and then schedule another date to continue. Or we could try to get another date if that would be better so that we're not running into that conflict.
If we started at 5:30, I don't see us going an hour, you know, to deliberate.
Right.
I agree with Janice.
All right. Why don't we try, why don't we reschedule for 5:30 that evening? And we'll make every effort to make really good decision, a thoughtful decision, but not take six hours. Although we've gone pretty close to six hours a few times. Don't undo that. So we're adjourned for this. Do we need to adjourn or should we adjourn?
Most of them adjourn.
Move by Ms. Carn second time.
Second.
Mr. Greenrich, all in favor of a little time? And then both.